Okay, with that, call the regular council meeting of the auditor. We do have everybody here but one. John Law is absent. What is that?
Somebody's calling.
The first item we're going to have to do is amend our agenda for this evening for our auditor in acceptance of the audit. Your motion approved. The next motion, Reggie's second. Call her, Walter.
Teresa.
Yes.
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 Okay. We'll do the consent agenda first and then have the auditor. We do have a treasurer's report on the consent agenda, October 2nd, July 11th, and July 18th, minutes, and approval payment of bills. Okay? Do you have treasurer's report, please?
Yes. August 6, 2019 treasurer's report, we have payable checks in the amount of $595,237.86. Of those payable checks, eight of them are to major vendors, and it represents 90 percent of the payable checks in the amount of $535,123.65. Excuse me. Payroll for July 26, 2019, to include social security and Medicare taxes, $154,197.34. We have one, two, three, four, five monthly bond payments. They total $63,594.37. Grand total payable checks, payroll, and bond payments, $813,029.57.
Okay. Thank you. Your motion approved, which consent agenda. So, raise the next motion, Reggie's second. Clarification discussion, call her, Walter.
Teresa.
Yes.
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 We have two guests with us tonight, Melissa Anderson from Bus Star Families, back there in the back, which is supposed to move around here, I guess everything's getting worked out, with the National Organization, does great in support of military families. And we also have Dana and Mrs. Joy, two city residents.
Welcome.
With that, we'll have our auditor present the audit, please.
Good evening, everyone. You should all have a copy of the Bound booklet. We're going to start on page four of that. There are also two letters there, the letter to those charged with governance, which was you all, and then management recommendation letter. And we'll start in the booklet on page four and then go over the letters at the end, and I will try to be as quick as I can through this. If you have any questions that come up tonight, ask, and if I can get you an answer, I will, and if not, I'll get you an answer in the morning. And then if questions happen to occur to you this evening while you're perusing this later in more detail, feel free to get with Edna, and she can get with me and get you an answer that way. So, with that, on page four, you'll find the independent auditor's report, and this is the report on the financial statements. It is a financial statement audit, and talks about management's responsibility for the financial statements, our responsibilities as auditors. And then on page five, you'll find the opinions paragraph, and if you read through that, what you'll find is you've received an unmodified or a clean opinion. That's the best possible result, and the same as the city received last year. Kind of shifted how I present these a little bit, and kind of pared it down a little so everybody can applaud. We're not going to go over quite as many numbers as normal, but we will turn over to page 19 and look at the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the governmental funds. I can't do this and not go over some numbers, so this is a concise way of looking at governmental funds. And so, your governmental funds are the general fund, the street fund, the park and pool fund, capital improvement sales tax fund, interstate plaza fund, and then three TIF funds. So, with that, total revenues in the general fund were $3,524,270. That is down about $543,000 compared to last year. $346,000 of that decline was due to decreased grant revenue, so not anything that was unexpected, really. The expenditure side of things, you expended $5,217,903 for the year. That's down about $385,000 compared to last year. So, the general fund transferred in $1,833,500 from other funds, and had an increase for the year of $139,867. And ending balance, in fund balance, which fund balance is comprised of all of your assets net of your liabilities in the fund accounting system. So, the net fund balance for the year was $1,338,088 at the end of 2018. So, a pretty good year in the general fund. In the street fund, total revenues were $1,382,184. That's up about $29,000 compared to last year. Total expenditures were down a whopping $1.8 million compared to last year at $1,726,292. The decrease there is because last year you had a refunding of some debt that was paid off, and so this year it just paid $160,712 in principal and interest on long-term debt. After a transfer in of $366,302, the street fund increased by $22,194, and ended the year with a fund balance of $251,916. In your park and pool fund, total revenues were $770,955. That's down about $19,000 compared to last year. Total expenditures were down about $46,000 at $811,558. Had a transfer in of $135,130, and an increase for the year of $94,410, and an ending fund balance of $660,255. So, pretty good year in that fund as well. In the capital improvement sales tax fund, you had total revenues of $1,197,840. That's up about $13,000 compared to last year. There were no expenses, but you did transfer out $1,277,662, which left a decrease in this fund of $80,578, and an ending balance of $212,402. In the interstate plaza fund, its revenues were up about $1,000 for the year compared to last year at $1,813. Transferred out $13,497, so decreased for the year by $11,684, and ended the year at $62,805. No, I won't get into each TIF fund necessarily, but I will say those are all debt service funds, and in the aggregate, the revenues across all of them were down about $40,000 compared to last year. The expenses across all of them were down about $101,000 for the year, and TIF two is done. So, one less TIF.
Because it didn't pay for the year.
That's right. So, overall, across all of your governmental funds, you had total revenues of $7,431,175, which is down about $558,000 compared to last year. Keep in mind, 346, actually, by the time you add the other funds in, it winds up being more like $360,000 of that decrease was due to decreases in grants. Pretty solid year financially on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, you're down $410,000 compared to last year at $8,403,531. And the total transfer into all governmental funds from basically the utilities was $729,987. And overall, the governmental funds decreased by $242,369, and a big portion of that was due to the decrease in the TIF two account. So, the other thing that I want to point out is, even though it was down $242,369 for the year, you had expenses of $384,574 that were capital outlays. So, it's kind of one-time type costs. So, if you take the capital out of that mix a little bit, the city looks pretty good for the year. Ended the year with total fund balances of $2,526,464. Overall, pretty good.
What was it, $9,000?
$79,06, I believe.
$79,06?
I thought it was like $5,008.
Maybe that number sticks in my head a little bit. So, anyway, yeah, much better than that. Any questions on the governmental funds? If not, we'll flip over to page 23 and take a look at the same statement for your enterprise funds, which are the electric fund, the water and sewer fund, the gas fund, and the solid waste transfer station fund. On the electric fund, total operating revenues were $6,977,203 for the year. That is up $617,000 compared to last year. Operating expenses increased by $187,000 compared to last year. They totaled $5,469,177. So, that left an operating income of $1,508,026. You had a net non-operating expense of $23,091, and transfers out of $1,079,511. And that left a net income for the year of $405,424, and an ending net position of $5,267,281. So, good year in the electric fund. In the water and sewer fund, total operating revenues were $1,964,329. That's up about $175,000 compared to last year. Good news is, the operating expenses only went up by about $77,000 compared to last year. They totaled $1,557,689, and that gave you an operating income of $406,640. There was a non-operating expense net of $70,135, a transfer in of $289,724, and that left a net income of $626,229, and an ending balance of $7,743,385. Before I go further on this, I want to clarify too, on the enterprise funds, when I say net position, that's a slightly different method of accounting for enterprise funds compared to governmental. So governmental wouldn't include things like long-term debt or capital assets. This is pretty much business accounting. So, it would include all of your capital assets, accumulated depreciation, and long-term debt. So, this gives you a really good financial picture of where you're at from a economic standpoint. So, it does include all of those things in that net position number. The gas fund had total operating revenues of $873,924. That's up about $100,000 compared to last year. Expenses were $803,906. That is also up about $100,000 compared to last year. You had an operating income of $70,018, a net non-operating expense of $20,722, a transfer in of $200,000. So, the net income for the year was $249,296, and left an ending balance of $701,762. So, pretty good year in that fund as well. Anybody noticing a trend? The state, the solid waste transfer station fund had total operating revenues of $2,238,944. That is up $85,000 compared to last year. Operating expenses were $2,015,15, which is up $91,000 compared to last year, and left an operating income of $223,929. You had a transfer out of $140,200, and that left a net income for the year of $83,729, and an ending balance of $1,402,952. So, overall, across all of your utilities, you had an increase in net position of $1,364,678, and had a total ending balance of $15,115,380. So, pretty solid in those utility funds. So, good work, everybody. Any questions on the enterprise funds? If not, I will keep rolling right through this.
Yeah, and we are to self-announce, but I want to make sure, because I'm hearing some comments, exposition and not actual dollars.
Yeah, this is not necessarily, when I say ending balance, I'm not saying that's how much you have in cash. That's kind of why I made a point of that. It's not just your cash number. That's your cash, accounts receivable, inventory, prepaid assets, and then...
We have a lot of value, and it's been going up.
Right.
So, that's what...
So, yeah, just to make that very clear.
Okay.
I think you even have a net pension asset this year, so that...
That's $15 million.
So...
I don't know, where did it go there?
A lot of that $15 million, I believe, is capital assets. Just so you know, about, well, the capital asset totals $16,836,000. There you go. Any questions on that? If not, toward the back of that book, probably on the last page of the Bound section, you'll see that there's a recommendation there for segregation of duties. It's part of the Yellow Book Audit Requirements.
Hasn't that been on there for the last three audits?
I'm pretty sure it's...
Four, five, 10?
Yeah, pretty sure that image is stuck in our printers and copiers, and it just randomly prints out on pages, but it is an extremely common situation, and now, not really one to be taken lightly either. People kind of joke about it being there from year to year to year to year. It's not just here, but a lot of places. And what it really amounts to is, it's a reminder that, hey, this condition does exist where you don't really have proper segregation. It's not economically feasible to have that segregation, so you're doing the best you can with what you have. And so, it's just a good time for everyone that's involved in internal controls to remind themselves that, hey, I am more critical than I would be anywhere else, because this control I'm performing is a mitigating control to this lack of segregation of duties.
Right.
It's also not uncommon for a city of our size for similar comments.
That is 100 percent accurate. This is very common in cities your size and twice your size. It is actually pretty hard to make us happy as auditors relating to segregation of duties, if I'm being honest and candid.
Well, if you made you too happy, you'd pick it up on the eye.
Well, you know. So, yeah.
Does the cash disbursements, is there enough segregation from your cash outlays? Who controls the cash, and who controls the records?
Well, that's kind of the issue, is that there is...
Is it separated now?
I would not say it's separated, but there are mitigating controls where there's oversight of the function.
So, you got oversight?
So, there is some oversight, and the oversight is the mitigating control. So, it's the people that are reviewing each other become the controls, and they become very important to your control structure, like bank reconciliations, people looking at the bank reconciliations and signing off that it's been reviewed, reviewing the budget versus actual reports, which you all are involved in, looking at the bills before payment. Those things are all mitigating controls and things that offset the risk the city has as a result of the lack of segregation of duty. So, it's not like the city's not addressing it, it's just something that you can't really clear.
Yeah. And when you were here last year, the issue was brought up about cameras, and we have located cameras in every place of transaction mode.
Very good.
Every location.
And that is another mitigating control. The old threat that you could get caught is a pretty good deterrent. So, and having it on video is really hard to dispute, so... Any questions beyond that?
And through into 2018, we've put $500,000 aside, so our reserve is up to 1.5 million there.
Nice.
We're still on track for this year, because you gave us the goal of three million should be in reserve, and you will continue to work towards that.
And we're working it more quickly than what he estimated we should be doing, too.
Yeah. You guys have been very proactive at implementing the financial changes that have been recommended, not just in the last year or two, but the last...
Five.
Five. So, I appreciate it. It is refreshing. I oftentimes make recommendations, and this might surprise you, but people disregard them. So, they are recommendations. I'm not a law-setting organization, so, I mean, it's just a recommendation. It is nice, though, to have people listen, so I do appreciate that.
Makes you want to come back to next year.
Sure does. Makes my job a lot easier. So, with that, I guess we'll look at the letters. They're stapled and should be either on top of, under, or in the back cover of your Bound booklet. There is a letter that I'm going to talk briefly about that is a management recommendation letter, and it has budgetary compliance down at the bottom of it. The other letter, while you're finding, the one I'm going to talk about, is the letter for those charged with governance, and it talks about the audit process, the kinds of entries that we made, how agreeable management was in complying with what we asked for and providing all of that. The spoiler alert is that we had no disagreements, everybody was cooperative and helpful, and overall, good to work with. So, the entries that we made were what I would consider to be routine at municipalities your size and twice your size. So, overall, a pretty smooth process overall. So, with that, I'll talk about the budgetary compliance matter, and you can kind of read it there. But basically, the street fund and the interstate plaza fund had a budget versus actual issue where the amendment didn't quite cover what actually happened. In the case of the street fund, the expenditures were a little beyond what was budgeted, which can happen easily, because we come in and we do an AP search, our accounts payable search, and we pick up more expense than maybe what you guys are seeing or considering in the cash basis operations of the city. So, that can happen. You can kind of do a more broad final budget amendment if you want to. A lot of cities do that, where it's basically a blanket statement of amending to actual. The final budget's more of a compliance matter rather than a management tool, so at that point, you just want to be sure you check the box. In the case of the interstate plaza fund, the transfers were done but were not budgeted, so that's kind of what tripped up there. So, again, amendment to actual there will cover that. So, overall, I don't consider that to be major in either case. They weren't by large amounts in either case. So, there's no budget police that are coming down to slap anybody on the wrist.
Yeah, I just got a question on that interstate plaza fund, which is kind of done with, where are we still using it for?
It has been used in the last two or three years ago. It was basically the conduit for some repairs where it was a joint effort between the city and the owners over there to do some...
All the transportation district?
Yeah. The money kind of flowed through that fund.
I thought I was just going to be a revenue district.
Pretty much it's...
Because we've got that again next year.
Some TIF expenditures, I mean, it's coming out there, too.
Okay, because I...
On our side.
When I do the budget, I zero that out, because that's when they were building, say, our full board, and when I'm building, I'm not expending over there, so...
It is a fund you could consider as one you could basically liquidate to a general fund. But that would be something you would do through the budget process.
Well, yeah, it has to stay on there, because if they go back in records, but I've been putting zeros for revenue and for expenses, and I don't know how we have transactions. Anyway...
So, we'll go and look and figure it out.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
My pleasure.
The other item that I had relates to some new pronouncements from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. I think I went over these last year when I presented, did not have a whole lot of information at that time, because it was not close enough to implementation that the classes were covering it, frankly. So, I'm always a little hesitant to read something and say, here's what I really think on the outset. I did that a little bit last year. I wasn't far off. GASB 83 deals with asset retirements of certain types of assets. And basically, I think I indicated last year that I thought that this would probably pop up as a result of your large FEMA CDBG project that's coming up where you're dealing with closing out a wastewater treatment plant. I was not wrong. Basically, what the GASB has come out and said is, we're trying to get aligned with something closer to the landfill standards. For those of you that don't know, if there's a landfill that you're involved in, then there are certain accounting requirements, and there's post-closure financial obligations associated with all of that, and there's particular standards about recording all of that in the financial statements. But things like wastewater treatment plants, gas stations, well, there's a variety of them listed out there, but those types of assets really weren't covered, even though there were environmental-type responsibilities if you were to close it. So, if you go out to DNR's website, you'll find that with wastewater treatment plant, when you build one, there are certain things you're signing on and agreeing to do if you ever close it. And so, the GASB's saying, those things you agree to do will get recorded under this standard. So, there'll be some new note disclosures in your 2019 audit, and there'll be a couple of new things on your financial statements in the 2019 audit, so, in the form of liabilities. So, just keep that in mind. The other item is GASB 87, which deals with leases, and I talked about this a little bit more last year, but it's for your 2020 year. And basically, you had two kinds of leases. You had an operating lease, which was effectively a rental, and you wouldn't own anything when it was all said and done. And then you had a capital lease, where you were basically buying something on payments and paying interest. And those types of leases, the capital ones, were always recorded on the financial statements, either in the government-wide financials or on your enterprise fund financials. And so, that was kind of normal, but the operating was just reported as a commitment. Now, under this new standard, the operating basically goes away, and all leases are just leases. So, if you have a lease where you're buying or renting anything, there'll be a lease obligation payable on there. On the good side, though, if you're renting tower space, or pole space, or variety of city assets, hangers, you name it, those things will show up as leases receivable, so, even though they're just rentals. So, that's kind of in a nutshell, GASB 87. So, a couple of new things coming up on the horizon, so... Any questions?
We can tell you're happier, so that's not too good.
Hey, I'm relaxed. I'm in summer mode. I've been doing school audits like Madman, so having a city audit done and wrapped up delivered is a good feeling.
But you said Edna was nice and everything?
Caught her on a good week. Actually, everyone is always nice. I have not, have not had any bad experiences here with any of your personnel, so, except for the chief, you know, please, now and again. He can be a little rough about his new cars and whatnot, but, and he's carrying a gun, so it's a little intimidating. He's a good guy. Any questions about the audit?
No.
Well, if anything does materialize in questions, feel free to get in contact with me. Edna and Anita have my cell phone number, and they're welcome to give it to you, and you can call me. I'm available for questions. I'll get you answers, because I want to help out however I can, help things work for the cities, so...
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the audit.
Thank you.
Michael makes a motion, one to seconds. Clarification discussion, call her, Walter.
Teresa.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
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 Okay, 3.1. Since the ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 208 Corn Drive, St. Robinson's area, we're going to have the Baptist Church. Read his bill, please. 3.1.
I'm sorry.
Bill number 19077, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 208 Corn Drive, St. Robert's Reserve, Marinette, Baptist Church.
Okay, we got a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Michael, second. Clarification discussion, call her, Walter.
Teresa.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Michael.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19077, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 208 Corn Drive, St. Robert's Reserve, Marinette, Baptist Church.
Your motion on the second reading, Regime's motion, author second. Clarification discussion, call her, Walter.
Teresa.
Yes.
Susan.
Linda.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Michael. Read his ordinance, please.
Order number 3404, ordinance approving the voluntary annexation of real estate located at 208 Corn Drive, St. Robert's Reserve, Marinette, Baptist Church.
Your motion on the reading, do you... Motion, Regime's second. Clarification discussion, call her, Walter.
Teresa.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. 3.2, is an ordinance supporting a lease agreement for Bus Star Families.
We have a certificate of registration of one corporate.
It was not sent to you. It was all down to you.
We have one. We have one. Bill number nineteen oh seven eight, ordinance approving a lease agreement with Blue Star Family Incorporated.
Your motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion.
Second.
Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes, and Tyce, tell your daughter happy birthday for us. Carrie, tell her happy birthday.
She's on vacation.
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh seven eight, ordinance approving a lease agreement with Blue Star Family Incorporated.
Your motion on the second reading. Teresa makes a motion, Reggie second. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Yes.
Read as an ordinance, please.
Order number thirty four oh five, an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Blue Star Family Incorporated.
Your motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Walter makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Okay, three point three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a premium summary between the city of St. Robert and Missouri area. Services Corporation Star Insurance Company for liability property casualty. Read those both, please.
Bill number nineteen oh seven nine, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a premium summary between the city of St. Robert and Missouri World Services Corporation Star Insurance Company for liability property casualty insurance.
Sorry, property casualty. Your motion on the first reading.
Yes.
Walter makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
This is a change in care, in insurance care.
Okay. Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
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 Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh seven nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a premium summary between the city of St. Robert and Missouri World Services Corporation Star Insurance Company for liability property casualty insurance.
Your motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion.
Second there.
Todd second. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
There's still three passes.
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Read as an ordinance, please.
Order number thirty four oh six, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a premium summary between the city of St. Robert and Missouri World Services Corporation Star Insurance Company for liability property casualty insurance.
Your motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, three point four is an extension of that for the cyber liability coverage. Tyce, read as both, please.
Bill number nineteen oh eight oh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract agreement between the city of St. Robert and NAS insurance for cyber liability coverage.
Your motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh eight oh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract agreement between the city of St. Robert and NAS insurance for cyber liability coverage.
Your motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion, Todd seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Read as an ordinance, please.
Order number thirty four oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract agreement between the city of St. Robert and NAS insurance for cyber liability coverage.
Your motion on the reading of the ordinance. Teresa makes a motion, Reggie second.
Yes.
Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh eight one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a Flashy County Missouri Area Fire Department Fire Protection District mutual response agreement.
Your motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Walter makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Read as an ordinance, please.
Order number thirty four oh eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a Flashy County Missouri Area Fire Department Fire Protection District mutual response agreement.
Your motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion, Walter second.
Yes.
Clarification, discussion, call over.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa? Yes. Second reading.
Order number nineteen oh eight, oh, I'm sorry, bill number nineteen oh eight two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Robert, January two, Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission Airport Aid Agreement for Air Service Promotion Project Number one nine six oh five seven B dash one.
Your motion on the second reading. Teresa makes a motion, Reggie second. Clarification, discussion, call over.
I have a question.
Okay.
The nine thousand four hundred forty-four dollars is, it says, the cities are required to provide matching funds. Do each one of us pay nine thousand four hundred forty-four dollars, or is that the-
Split half.
Oh, okay. Yes. Did you follow me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa? Yes. Okay, read as an ordinance, please.
Order number thirty four oh nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Robert, entered to Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission Airport Aid Agreement for Air Service Promotion Project Number one nine six oh five seven B one.
Okay, your motion on the reading of the ordinance. Walter makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Next one, we're not approving authorization of the highway transportation. This is another airport aid agreement with the cities of St. Robert and Wainsville.
May we correct a mistype in the heading? There's an A in authorizing that should not be there when we cross that out. It's authorizing.
Oh, authorizing.
I'm sorry, but the word is gone and I missed it.
No, actually, it should be authorizing. Take the A and T out, right? The A and the T out.
A T.
Yeah.
I did that one.
Read as an ordinance, please, read the bill.
Bill number nineteen oh eight three, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of Missouri highways and transportation committee airport agreement with the cities of St. Robert and Wainsville.
Your motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, Todd seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes. Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh eight three, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of Missouri highways and transportation commission airport aid agreement with the cities of St. Robert and Wainsville.
Your motion on the second reading, please. Reggie makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Okay, read as an ordinance, please.
Order number thirty four ten, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of the great highways and transportation commission airport aid agreement with the cities of St. Robert and Wainsville.
Your motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Reggie makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, three point eight is a Coca-Cola thing you have here at the City Hall and down at the podium, agreement with that contract. You either was able to get a five hundred dollar donation.
One year.
About one year. Read as both, please.
Bill number nineteen oh eight four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a marketing agreement between the city of St. Robert and Ozarks Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company.
Your motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh eight four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a marketing agreement between the city of St. Robert, Ozarks Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company.
Your motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Todd makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Read as an ordinance, please.
Order number thirty four eleven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a marketing agreement between the city of St. Robert and Ozarks Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company.
Your motion on the reading of the ordinance.
No.
Teresa makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, three four nine is about a grant for a dump truck through the Volkswagen Trust government truck.
Your reading is an ordinance, let's.
If you're going to the exhibit A, which is the second page in your packet, it says a hundred thirty-one thousand, there's line two that I corrected, say sixty-five thousand five hundred. Basically, it's a fifty-fifty grant and a hundred percent grant. So, if we get half the price of a truck, we'll be happy. Wainsville did get one last year, and we're trying this year, so. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Bill number nineteen oh eight five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Robert to sign and submit a Volkswagen Trust government truck program application for a fifty percent grant, purchase and replacement dump truck for the public works department.
And this is that story that we hit, that took over, and you had to have a truck that can be destroyed, so it would fit the criteria. Your motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call over.
Yes.
Destroyed.
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Randy?
Yeah, but we have to change that amount on section two on the ordinance two.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Would you make, we need to make a formal motion to amend the ordinance.
Did we finish the one crossed here so we get one done?
Yes. Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we do have a motion, good catch, on page, on the ordinance page, section two, it has the wrong amount there also. Do you got a motion to make that adjust?
Motion.
Todd makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call it all.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
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 Reader's second, second amendment.
I do a first reading.
Okay, first reading.
Second reading.
You gotta be a turny type.
Reason one. Amended, amended ordinance. Bill number nineteen oh eight five. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Robert to sign and submit a Volkswagen Trust Government Truck Program application for a fifty percent grant to purchase a replacement dump truck for the public works department.
Get a motion on the first reading of the amendment. Walter makes a motion. On the second. Clarification, discussion, call it all.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number nineteen oh eight five. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Robert to sign and submit a Volkswagen Trust Government Truck Program application for a fifty percent grant, purchase and replacement truck, dump truck for the public works department.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion.
Second.
Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call it all.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
Readers of the ordinance.
Orders number thirty-four-one-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Robert to sign and submit a Volkswagen Trust Government Truck Program application for a fifty percent grant to purchase a replacement dump truck for the public works department.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Walter makes a motion. Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call it all.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, the last one.
They're definitely authorized to make that purchase.
Yes. Fifty percent. Three point ten is ordinance authorizing passage enforcement of our midyear budget revisions for two thousand nineteen budget year. Any comments on that? We had it at committee, committee approved it, so. Make it good to go.
It decreased about a hundred and fifty-five thousand from the original budget. In December of last year.
Okay. Readers of the bill, please.
Bill number nineteen oh eight-six. An ordinance authorizing passage enforcement utilization of a revised two thousand nineteen budget for the city of St. Robert.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion.
Second.
Reggie second. Clarification, discussion, call it all.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number nineteen oh eight-six. An ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement utilization of a revised two thousand nineteen budget for the city of St. Robert.
Get a motion on the second reading. Todd makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call it all.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Readers of the ordinance, please.
Orders number thirty-four-one-three. An ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement and utilization of a revised two thousand nineteen budget for the city of St. Robert.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call it all, please.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Next committee meeting schedule.
You shouldn't finish it.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Flag. I'll tell him that spot. So go ask Edna?
That's it?
Thanks for figuring all that out. Okay, next committee meeting schedule. Finance, I don't think we need one, we just got the midyear event. Public Works, Steve, anything?
No.
Got your dump truck on the way now. Emergency Services. Nothing for Emergency Services?
No.
Okay. Taxi, he just left. Daniel, let it go up. Is he still looking?
Park Committee has a subcommittee meeting tomorrow night at five o'clock.
I didn't know that. What is it?
The barbecue.
Oh.
So that's, that's kind of skipped over because anyone would get to that clock. Okay. With the taxi situation, Mr. Dorel is here to drive taxi for one of the taxi companies. And his question is about Uber and Lyft and all that and their ability to pick up in the city. And we've been through that already, so. We can't intervene in any of that stuff, that's.
Well, Uber is Uber legal.
Yeah.
The way they operate. And they have tested that in at least twelve different states, and every time it's been tested, it's been legal. So Uber and what they do is, what they do is.
The Post did put a letter out with some restrictions on base, but we can't do that outside of that, so. That was his question. I know that he wanted to ask it. St. Robert, I'd be, we're gonna talk about that approach. City clerk. And finance.
And everything else?
Okay, I got the assessed valuation after the board adjustment, I mean equalization today. It decreased about, it says something about four hundred thousand dollars.
From what the original was.
The original.
Wonder what has the food, we don't prove that, do we?
I have to have the certification letters to the part by, so we'll do the second meeting after the second meeting in August.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
What's the assessed value total? Is it a guy owner?
It was about twelve million, well, it has a personal property too on there, so. For the month, year-to-date, August, tax of sales for the city of St. Robert is a hundred and sixty-five million, nine hundred seven thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars.
That's for the whole year, not for the end of the year?
For the whole year, correct. Up about five percent year-to-date. Sales tax received was up thirteen point eight-nine percent for the month of August. And like I said, year-to-date, we're up five percent.
Okay.
And big month. First day on the day is disconnect day for utilities for non-payment, so get rid of that. And also, in our operating account, we have two point three million after the payment of bills and nonpayments tonight.
Okay. Chief Shep?
Couple things. I want to thank everybody that sent flowers. My mom recently passed away, so I want to thank everybody personally for that. City and then the staff members. I think I saw one from Anita and Larry down there. So it's gonna do a card, but I think formal is a lot better, so appreciate that. Next thing I want to say is, is Steve, thanks, your guys are tremendous, what they do with the training site down there. I mean, you guys have drove by and looked at that, I mean, they, he's got a real good crew, I think, that does construction and works for him there, so. You know, hats off to you for that, thank you for doing that. Excellent work. With that being said, I was kind of waiting on a first storage container. Person I've been dealing with, I've been, he's been saying he's delivering for two months, so I'll call another outfit to get another, another price and see if we can get this going because it's pretty crucial that we start doing our quarterly drills inside that. So we have to do that with ISO and plus, we need to be training with that anyway, so. Waiting on a phone call back, this guy here actually, I'm gonna see if the price is, they actually fabricated for fire service for training.
For your specs.
Inside that, yes. So this might turn out to be a better, better blessing in disguise here, so we'll see what happens.
The other guy said he'd already painted it and everything.
That's what he says. I don't know now, it's kind of a red flag for me, I've been hearing this for three months now almost, and man, you know, I gotta get my guys going.
Send them any money, so.
Yeah, no, I ain't sending anything. Sending up until the product's here, so you bet, so.
When you get the new one up, can I go in it again?
Yep.
I'll stand by to help you out, Todd.
We'll put up to about eight hundred, he's.
Just make sure the door works this time, yeah.
That's the post component, hopefully next year we can finish it off and have the second level, and then one more wide, so two more. And this outfit actually, like I said, and they're out of Springfield and St. Louis, we actually, I didn't realize it was them, but we actually visited South Callaway County, up by Fulton. We actually visited their training site, these people actually put that together for them, they've got like six of them stacked up, like six.
The one you spoke with?
Yes, here recently.
Not the one you're waiting on?
Right, yeah, I'm probably gonna have to file thirteen this guy, I just can't wait anymore, so. But we want to get, you know, that's such a great spot, and it's gonna be a very useful tool, you know, we have to, training repetitions, that's what makes us good and makes your department good, makes the guys look good out there, so. Also, the upstairs is about finished. The four bunk rooms are about completed upstairs there, that's looking real good. They knocked out the wall to put the actual shower in there, which is an even bigger shower than our downstairs.
Yay!
So, yeah, which is nice because I'm gonna be stuck with the smaller shower downstairs, but take care of my guys, so. So that's, that's going pretty good, I'd say probably within two weeks we should be done with that flooring and that project. And our B shift actually done the construction for a good part of that, so, you know. But it's kind of a mess up there, that's for sure right now, but it's, it's.
And financing for the new oil truck is in, we're waiting on the approval to come back. Then we approve it, and then we purchase the latter truck.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's, that's great stuff to get that, get that out of the way, so. At one time, you probably noticed here, cutting into time, I have to go do training too here tonight, but I'm sure you all were aware, I think at one time we had like three of our trucks down, so at different times. So, but everything's up and running, besides the air conditioner on sixteen fifty-one, the first engine we bought, two thousand sixteen engine, so I'll have to get it looked at again.
Because most of it's been covered by the O R T.
Yeah, most of it, except for this last round was not covered by the O R T, which is the actual lift pump to the injectors on that, so. So far, the new tanker, the freightliner, not international, is doing good, so knock on wood, it's doing pretty good, so. Even new stuff, you get problems with, I, crystal ball, I couldn't tell you if it'll, you know, I'm sure the latter will have something with it, you know, everything's so sensor-driven and electronics and computer-driven nowadays that there's just no talent, so. But I think that's about it for right now, I want to bring up to speed on that, go ahead.
I drive by there every day, two or three times a day. Would you guys like to have a bigger trash dumpster?
Oh, yes ma'am, that'd be great.
Can we get that fixed for them? That trash dumpster is always completely full and sometimes running over and it just looks bad.
It, it does, and, and also, on another note, we're getting ready to put two more cameras up at the station, they're gonna be facing towards the training site in that area.
So you think somebody's dumping their trash there?
Because I think we're getting some people dumping trash from the apartments down in there.
Oh.
Me and my deputy chief were just talking about that, I think we're getting some people dumping in there, but a bigger one would be nice just because of what we do.
Yeah.
But if a camera's on there and we could catch them.
I think they'd, I love to.
Well, at least they'll use them in trash.
You know? Get a bigger trash dumpster down there, they need it.
Padlock it. Yeah, that's, that's fine, I can go to Ziggy Mine over there and talk to them about it if you want.
I'll talk to you later and tell you what I did one time.
Can imagine.
Say it on camera.
Chief, I just want to, chief.
Yep, go ahead.
When we come out there during, while you're doing your training, what do we expect to see?
What's that, now when you come by, what do you expect to see?
Training there and you have this.
Okay.
What is your, what is your goal in the?
The goal of that is we practice our structural firefighting techniques right there, is what we'll be doing, which means you go in and practice simulating a fire.
Going inside or burning building.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That's what that's for, and then also, step two of the process, I'm gonna get a car and gotta shell it out, and we can do actual live fire, vehicle fire training too, and we're gonna put it in the back of the lot over there. So, and we want to do a roof prop which simulates getting up and doing ventilation, cutting a hole in there and have your smoke and heat and gases go up through there. So as I said, there's a big piece of the puzzle for this whole training site. But that's what you're gonna be seeing, given time, whenever we're doing training, whatever that may be, a lot of times Tuesday nights, but the other shifts have to train when they're on too.
And I'm not gonna nuke and dime you, I just want to, will you go in there and bring out a, a dummies?
Oh yeah, we actually, we have what's called rescue.
That's why Todd goes.
Yeah. We have a two-hundred, a hundred dummy. But yeah, you go to practice search and rescue for people going in, they're fire out. Ladder it up, it's gonna be about nine and a half foot tall. Next year, if we get the second one, you'll look about, you know, about eighteen to twenty feet tall, so in almost a couple stories is what that'll be, so. But there's lots that we can do at this, and it's very crucial that, that we have this.
Will that distract?
What's that?
Would that distract the general population of, I mean, at all?
I don't, I don't think so, I mean, there's not a ton of traffic flow down through there, so I don't, it's not like it's a main road, so I think it'll be okay.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sure people be driving by slowly, kind of looking if you got smoke puffing out of there for some reason, but a lot of that's also gonna be a smoke machine, which is more or less fogged, the optical smoke, we'll be doing a lot of training doing that, and then sometimes we'll be doing actual live burns to get the heat intensity in there too, so.
I'm not bothered by it, I live in that neighborhood.
Nope.
So it's. It's, it's good.
Would that be available for other departments to use?
Yeah, yeah, I don't mind because we all mutual aid, so there could be a time, Crocker's actually gonna help with it too, help for the design process and help with props inside there, so they'll become an overall lot.
Okay.
I'm sure you'll see Waynesville's duty crew and our duty crews, because we're paid getting together, coming over there as well.
Okay.
It's a great location, we still get a call, we're in the city, boom, we drop, we go, so that's a nice thing. There'll be required training days where everybody, all staff members have to come in from all shifts, you know, so we try to do that now, but it's kind of hard to coordinate, so it's, it's a blessing, you can't, I mean, you're gonna have classrooms in your station here to do your classroom portion, you walk across the street and do your other, other drills, your actual hands-on drills, so, kind of nice, so.
And Mike went through an engine green, everything was.
Oh yeah, I did, yeah, that was interesting, I was really worried about that, and Mary told me I have to worry about it, and he was right. I thought I was in there five minutes, whatever they gave me, I was in there thirty-five minutes. That's all I can say. So I thought I was still awake. But yeah, big arteries and clears the bell, so a little bit of a scare there, but I think it's some other issues, so, but other than that, it's, it's clears the bell, so it was, they actually go up through your wrist now, that was pretty neat, so. It was bruised up until last week pretty bad, but yeah, it was an interesting time, but I, that's about thirty-five minutes of my life I don't remember.
Yeah.
So whatever that was, it was good stuff. So that's all I got, thank you.
Steve, other folks?
A few things here, on July thirteenth, we had a pretty good power outage over on the St., on the St. Robert Boulevard area, which had affected some of the wells over there in that area, they went down, and also a lot of the businesses in that area. We've checked out all the lines, everything seemed okay, and it appeared that it was a rather large bird that, that took that system down. So they got that back online. Don't remember, it's been so long ago, I don't remember how long folks was actually down over in that area.
One hour, was that about two hours?
And then well seven on the Superior Road, it's been doing good. I guess ever since we brought it online, we've tested it about three different times, and so far, had good luck every, every time, so I think we're over the, the bad part that we, you know, when we first brought it online, we had some issues with it, I think they've all been addressed and we're on the. Opal Street Stormwater Project, that is complete now, I think they've completed a little sidewalk stretch over here on East Lawn, that was done. Today, we just installed a stormwater box here in the city hall parking lot. If you remember, when we repaved that, we resloped it to try to get the water off, but the silt just keeps building up in that, the swell that went down through the property there, so we actually put a drop box in there now for stuff to actually go and get out into the, the stormwater basin, so hopefully that'll help out.
Been working on the dumpster back there, haven't seen how much.
Yeah, we've tore the old dumpster side out, and we're kind of waiting on some, the fence company to get us the poles for the gates, we're gonna put ballards in too, but he wants to use his own poles for the gating, so his hardware will, will actually stick or attach to it a lot easier. The rope grader, we took it out last week and the engine blew up in it. No forewarning or anything, just driving down the road and started knocking, so it.
Forty years old.
Yeah, it's a nineteen eighty-six model.
You can't take care of, oh, come on, Steve.
You got a lot of years out of it, because the city did buy that piece with them brand You got a lot of years out of it, as the city did by that piece of equipment brand-new. That, that might have been the first piece of equipment the city bought.
Jack Fincher probably bought that.
Maybe, yeah. But that's all I have.
Okay, Steve?
I saw you put the water in down the dog park, that was good, I was making progress.
Yeah, we'll, probably be next week, we'll be back over in there, we've got to put a drain in there, we're trying to get everything done inside the, the area that's going to be fenced, so, so when they come fence it, then we don't have to go back in and tear stuff up.
Right. And you're, you're still going to level that off a little bit, right, because it's got a bad drainage problem right there.
Just the side where you drive in, we're going to make that, we're going to fill that in and put drainage pipe in there and make that for parking, but we're going to let it go ahead and stay sloped in the back.
And, okay, Don, IT?
Just a couple of quick things, I've got three computers left in the city to update Windows ten, so we'll be compliant with that. And I ordered two servers this week to replace three of the servers on our rack that are five-plus years old. That's about all I have right now.
Yeah. Okay. Transfer station, Jake?
Good evening. Tonnage for July was four thousand three hundred and seventy-eight tons, which is just, just a hair over a hundred ninety-nine tons a day average. Also want to remind everyone, the special collection is going to be the fourteenth of September at the community center parking lot, it's a Saturday from nine AM to one PM. That would be electronics and appliances, and anything with a cord basically. And also, one last thing, a former employee of ours, Billy Finn, he was a long time, he's got some health issues, it's come up recently, if you would all keep him in your thoughts and prayers, I'd appreciate that. Other than that, that's all I have right now. The trailer is being repaired in Springfield, I'll follow up with them tomorrow, I haven't heard back from them.
What about the loading?
The loader, I called Friday and they said it still wasn't ready, they would contact me when it was ready, and I'll follow up with them again tomorrow morning too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Tyce?
Few things, we are taking the final depositions in the emergency services in nine eleven case and set trial in the first couple of weeks of October, so we'll probably get a decision on that sometime in early November, so we're about ready. Edna, you're, you're on Friday, not Monday, okay?
That's good, okay.
We have received a request by Missouri Employers Mutual to approve the change of doctors for our injured police officer, Brian Mercer. We control the medical, and I want to look up this doctor and make sure he's going to take, he's somebody, because sometimes the comp carriers do not provide the doctors you want with your people, so I want to check this guy out before we approve it, because we have that authority. On the fire truck, the way they're set up, they have financing and they have the truck, and after long discussions this week with our financing folks, they have agreed to sign the financing documents when they're approved, we're going to have a special meeting, the financing will approve it, Mayor will sign it, and then we'll do the purchase. And we've also, we'll have the additional marijuana changes for all the ordinances on that date too. There's a lot of stuff going on, but nothing, it's a long evening and nothing to worry about, we can talk about it next time.
Okay. Anita?
We've had a few things go on, Tyce, that Blue Star family was emailed to you on July the twenty-second, there's the application. We had our soccer goals stolen at the community center, they were about four thousand dollars, actually forty-four hundred.
They cut the lock?
Yeah, they cut the lock, the chains and the lock and took them. We do have cameras that are being installed up there now, we're putting a flyer together and sending it out to the coaches to see if anybody hears of it in the schools.
Put it on Facebook?
Well, not yet, we have, we haven't got our flyer done yet, so we're working on that.
That's a real quality person that would steal some...
Yeah, I know, isn't that sad?
Good for you if you're watching.
Yeah. Yeah. We have been really busy with meetings, we've had Growth Alliance meeting, Mayor chairs that, we had two ISSP meetings, one was a community meeting, and then one was just the general overview of what would be discussed during the week. We have started a subcommittee of the park for the Kansas City Barbecue Society cookoff that we'll be having the end of March. Jean Newkirk, Amy, who was helping us with marketing, and I met up here at five-thirty on Saturday morning, we went to Lori, Missouri, and spent the day, if you all are on our Facebook, you've seen all the videos that Jean and Amy did, I'd been kidding, and they made me go do the administrative paperwork and learn how to do it when they wouldn't have the fun, but we did go and do that, that is, one of the requires of the Kansas City Barbecue Society is we have to actually work a Friday and a Saturday at the event before ours, have some paperwork signed off, so we're knocking that out, and it was a cool day. We are applying for a solid waste district grant, it's twenty thousand with no match, that's due the end of August. We've had an airport meeting, a CoUSA meeting, and just been busy. Anything else, Mayor?
Okay. Just to let everybody know, Missouri Avenue paving has been going on at night, they've repaired a lot of the concrete areas, and the paving with build began Sunday night, and of course, they worked last night, and it's about a two, two-week process, all of Missouri Avenue will be paved. And they're also going to pave from the Congo Way or Memorial or our flag out there, all the way to J Highway on Z Highway, so there's going to be a lot of paving around the city lower. This Friday night in St. Louis, the city is giving the above and beyond award for employment, support of the Resort and National Guard, and so there's a group going up to that Friday night. Saturday night is the St. Robert Historical Association will be having a dinner, and they've got a guest speaker.
Blessings there.
That begins at five o'clock, and if anybody would like to tune in, tickets are available here at the city, or like Walter Reeves, Frank Haber, several different people. And everybody's been noticing the new Burger King going up next to Bank of Missouri on that side of the street across from Cracker Barrel, and there's going to be probably six or seven businesses in there on its deck, besides the Burger King, so. A lot happening locally, and with that...
We did forget to mention the pre-bid on the Missouri Avenue lighting.
Yes, the pre-bid on Missouri Avenue, one good, good catch, is, so the bids are up there, that's the light up all the way to the front gate from that last gate there by Lamb's Dones, Gateway Circle, and take over some of the old move-out lights that have, haven't had electricity to and then that kind of stuff, so the city took that on. Also, Magi Construction is working, supposed to start last Wednesday, but I haven't seen them out there yet.
I think they started today.
Today?
Down in the hole.
Okay.
It's a prep work.
Okay, which is the interconnection twelve, twelve-inch man from about Cafe Correa to the front gate, so that construction will be going on here in the next, probably a month or so, anyway. With that, our next board of order meeting is August twentieth, and that's already shaping up to be a very packed agenda at this point. And then we're going to have a closed session tonight, so the meeting can be closed pursuant to Missouri Law Chapter sixteen, dash, section, Michael, section two real estate, and section three personnel. Got a motion to go on the close?
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, land the second.
I want to talk to him.
Clarification, discussion, call it over.
Teresa?